All right, Sissy went to vote, so she will be back to mayor in shortly, but we wanted to get the meeting started on time. So, let's start with the roll call, please. Mayor Brook. Deputy Mayor Dexter.
Here.
Councilmember French.
Here.
Councilmember Kidd.
Here.
Councilmember Merritt.
Here.
Councilmember Moran.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman Warren.
Here.
Manager West.
President.
Attorney Lord.
Here.
And Councilmember Moran, will you leave the pledge this evening, please?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so this is our opportunity for public comment. We have two people on the list tonight, but anyone can speak even if you haven't signed up. Just wanted to remind everyone to state your name and whether you're a resident of the city of Port Angeles or affiliated with a business or organization, and you will have three minutes to speak. So the first person on the list is Suzanne DeBae.
I'm Suzanne DeBae, and I don't live in Port Angeles, I live in Clough County. And I'm speaking as a member of the Interfaith Community of Clough County and also for the Compassion Campaign. I know at a recent meeting, City Council looked at adopting the Charter for Compassion and said it would be a good thing if people came and shared how they used compassion in their careers. And I'm actually here today as a retired teacher of 37 years. Taught all ages, 32 years in Port Angeles District, 28 of those years were with teenagers. And if anyone ever needs patience, love, and compassion, it's when you're working with teens. One will never be a successful teacher if one does not look at all their students with compassion, not seeing anything in their faces except that they are, in Jewish terms, created in B'tzalim, Eluchin, the divine image. I have three examples of hundreds out of hundreds that stand out how important compassion was in my career as a teacher. First of all, I had a student who had incredible skills and intelligence but was just never getting their homework done. And rather than getting angry and punishing them, I sensed something important was going on, and I needed to find that out. So it took some time and working, building trust, but I finally learned that they had no place to study. It was the middle of the winter, and they were living with their family in a tent in the woods in the snow. And I was then able to refer them to their counselor who got the family housing. I also agreed to be the faculty advisor to the Gay Straight Alliance Club as it had its first, as it started, so it was a new club at the high school. I could speak for an hour on the instances where my room became a refuge for students who were harassed and bullied because of their sexual orientation. Compassion was an absolute must. And lastly, as a history teacher, for many years, I taught a unit on the Holocaust. I always told my students I didn't do this because I was Jewish, but that I wanted them to know how easily it had happened and to recognize the signs so it wouldn't happen again. Choose a group that is other. Make it normal that society sees them as animals, rats, insects that infest the country, and that ordinarily good people will remain silent and look the other way when they're dragged away. In our climate of divisiveness, hatred, and racist rhetoric, we need our children to see in their teachers and see that their teachers treat all their students with love and compassion, and I would strongly urge that the City Council adopt the Charter of Compassion. Thank you. Sorry to be late, guys. I got my ballot in. All right, Susan Hilgrin.
My name is Susan Hilgrin, and I don't live in the city, but I have a drop-in center. So I gave them a picture of the new playground that's up where the housing, the new housing is. I was up there visiting somebody, and these kids were playing, and they were not very nice kids, and I said, asked them, I said, "Can you please play nicely?" And then I asked the lady I was visiting, "Where are the playground rules?" Well, those pictures will show you, the playground rules are 25 feet in the air, and they're about this big a font. So the letter of the law obviously says you have to have rules, but it's like the rest of our system, sometimes it really doesn't work. So we need to be careful when we're asking for things for people to do, you know? It didn't really make sense. And then they're using words where little kids will play. So anyhow, it's just kind of one of those silly things. Taffy Store is doing really well, we're still making some money. Still working on the housing project, and I just keep hitting my head against the wall, and I just continue, and we will get through this, and I will get so much smarter because of it. Homeless numbers are up, I did a survey, they're all our clients, they're all from Clough County. We still need porta-potties, we still need garbages, please, for the homeless, please, we've got to figure it out. Tents and sleeping bags only last about a month, they're not meant to be lived in, and these people are living in them. So when you're wondering why there's so many out there, they don't have a place to put them, and if they only last a month, they need to keep regaining them over and over, you know, as if they just only last so long. We need to be thinking about that, especially with this big cleanup that just went down, you know? Where'd they go? Where'd they go? This doesn't make sense to me. So we really do need some garbages. I'm sorry if the city has to pay for them or whatever, but I know we can figure that out. You could put a big garbage by Taffy, put it by where the new store is, we can figure that out, it could be homeless garbage, you know, we could do it. The haters are still out there, they're still chasing the homeless. In fact, one of them, who is a detective, tried to run over a homeless person, and I know the story on it. So we really need, we really need some changes, guys. We need to be getting serious about this. This compassion thing is great, but we've got to go the next step faster, because it's just not okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's all the folks who have signed up. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address City Council on any item right now? All right, seeing none, we will move on to late items. Any late items, remember?
No late items, Ms. South.
Okay, great, thank you. The consent agenda. Anybody need any consent agenda items pulled out? No? Okay, so let me read the consent agenda. City Council Minutes for July 16th, 2019. Expenditure Report from July 6th, 2019 to July 26th, 2019, the amount of $3,455,592.11. 2019 Landfill Beach Nourishment Project. Tent Street Reconstruction Project, number TR1100, final acceptance. Maintenance Contract Renewal for City Emergency Generator. Wastewater Utility Updates to the Municipal Code.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All right, are there any comments? Okay, well, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, so ordinances, not requiring a council public hearing, first one's the For Higher Licensing Code. Who's going to take that one? G1. Attorney Lord?
So approximately a year ago, the Council looked at an ordinance that was intended to allow Uber and similar companies to operate in the city. Those companies are not licensable under our current code, and so they haven't been operating with the city. At that time, there were quite a few questions that came up about an ordinance that was added at that time. Uber had some objections to it, our local taxi companies had some objections to it. Councilmembers had brought up some very good questions about it. And so at that time, it was withdrawn. We then went into a period where we were attempting to make some adjustments to ordinance, and it was difficult to find consensus with everybody. Within the last couple of months, Council has been asking again about an ordinance that would coordinate all of those interests and issues. We have made a new attempt at this. It is a different ordinance than most we've had. In this ordinance, we have simplified a lot of the processes. For instance, the city, under the current ordinance, is supposed to do background checks. We have now, we still require background checks on all the drivers. Those are now a requirement of the companies that are operating, whether it's a taxi company, whether it's an Uber-like company, they are the ones who are responsible for doing that. Likewise, the ordinance that was, that we have now, which was done in the 1980s, our chief of police was required to inspect every four-hire vehicle. And maybe in the 1980s, the police chief had the time to do that, and it's not practical now, so we changed that. And all, the other thing we've done is to make all of these requirements applicable across the board. So the requirements that are applicable to the taxicab companies are the same requirements that are applicable to Uber-like companies. And so to the extent that they can, they're operating all under the same rules. So in summary, we have redone the ordinance. After redoing this ordinance, we did send it back out to the local taxicab companies and also to Uber. Had no response or comments from the taxicab companies. Uber, we have one comment, I've given that to you on your list, and they simply wanted to change the definition of who's qualified to camp, who is qualified to do the inspection as required for their vehicles. And that just came today, I haven't had time to think about it a lot, but that was the one and only change that they had. So because the ordinance is fundamentally changed from the last one we did, we're presenting this as a first reading. So operating to you tonight, we are operating to you tonight as a first reading, and recommending conduct a first reading, bring it back at the next meeting or a second reading in consideration. In the meantime, what we will do is take a closer look at this definition that is offered by Uber. We will, if we have any changes to it, we'll let you know. If we accept it as is, we'll let you know. We'll let you know before the next meeting what we're recommending to you regarding that one.
Okay. Thank you. Council, questions?
Let's see, on page G1, there's this old typo. I mentioned background analysis, third sentence down in the middle, and because the code is/was primarily designed, I think we can eliminate is. That's just a typo. And then at the last paragraph, "Inspection records are subject to audit by the city." I wanted to ask Serena, who would be doing this, and would this be an imposition on staff?
So that's currently something that we are, we can do, and we do take into consideration when we receive the revenues what they look like, what their history is, and if we see issues or problems, then we can exercise our right to do audit.
Okay. And then the new draft, let's see, eliminates requirement for license for retired four-hire driver, but it preserves the requirements that each four-hire driver have a clean driving record, a background check, and insurance. So who is actually going to check these items? Who's going to check that they have a clean driving record, background check, and the chance?
The company that hires a driver or a bunch of the driver services require to make that determination for each driver, they're required to keep four records of that.
Okay.
And that's part of something to audit by the city at any time.
Okay, I just didn't want this to be an overload for city staff. Thank you.
All right, council, any other questions?
It's not used to work. I have a, just a couple of comments. First of all, I particularly like the provision in this that defines what Uber really is, and that's a data processing, if you will, system for getting a ride. In other words, in this new ordinance, Uber cannot solicit off-the-street passengers. And I think that distinction is important for a lot of safety reasons, obviously, but also for, Uber's not a taxi service as we know a traditional taxi service to be. And so I think, Bill, I compliment you on putting that provision in this, in this ordinance. I was very happy to see that. And a lot of the administrative burden does lie on the company that's providing the service, and that's very clear also in the ordinance, and I'd like to see that. Our obligation only is to audit it, and the audit can take place occasionally as we see fit. So the ordinance, in my personal opinion, is very well crafted, and especially with the provisions about what Uber really is and should be, as opposed to a taxi service, and also the record-keeping system that's built into this ordinance, that does, I think, take a lot of the burden off the city staff to do that. So thank you, Bill, I think it's very well done, the ordinance.
All right, Lindsey?
I appreciate the effort to create one regulatory scheme for all four-hire vehicles, so thank you for that. There is a section that then specifically has operational limitations for transportation network companies. Most of those make sense to me as specific to transportation network companies. The last one, though, section E, talks about the transportation network company implementing a zero-tolerance policy, use of alcohol drugs and alcohol applicable to any TNC driver or on its digital network. I was just curious why we don't apply that to all four-hire vehicles, and instead just make it applicable to TNCs? Is there a reason there to just make it a TNC policy specific to TNCs? Because it seems to me like any four-hire vehicle should have that.
That makes sense.
We'll take a little look at that, and again, we have a change of recommendation, let's get back to you for next.
Anyone else? Any other comments on this? All right, allow, let me read the ordinance. An Ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, Amending Provisions of the Port Angeles Municipal Code relating to the licensing of four-hire vehicles. So we will continue this, unless there's any other comments, we will continue this to the August 20th meeting. So moving on. On to Professional Services Agreement, Olympic Peninsula Community Clinic.
So I am a board member of the Olympic Peninsula Community Clinic, and I participate, unless you're skipping.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I missed the budget, certainly did, sorry.
You have to stick around for that part.
2019 Budget Amendment. Sorry, I circled the wrong thing checking it out, so. Serena?
So tonight, we have the second amendment to the 2019 budget. This amendment is almost entirely comprised of capital facility projects that will be prioritized during the CFP project or process. So these are included in the amendment so that they can align with the CFP and the budget. There are also some personal changes due to contract negotiation settlements, so those bargaining units that have settled to date have been included in this amendment as well. And then there is one last item I would like to clarify for council tonight, and that is the movement of the fireman's medical premiums in the pension fund into the general fund. So this is a result of an accounting change that came down from our governmental accounting standards board, or GASV. It is required for this year, and so we are moving those in the general fund. As a result, we are also moving the state share tax that typically goes in the fireman's pension fund, removing that to the general fund as well to help offset those costs. So tonight, we are asking for a first reading and a continuation to the August 20th meeting, and I'm available for any questions we have.
Okay, council, any questions? Yes?
Okay. There was three items I would like to, council, to consider, that perhaps we can move these to submit applications to the Lodging Tax Committee. The first one is railings on the city pier. We really need to replace and repair railings on the city pier. That is a major tourism spot, and I think that is something that we would be highly eligible for lodging tax funds. And then the Dream Playground is going through a renewal. It is one of our most loved playgrounds in the area, most well-used, and it needs to be refurbished and redone, and people just love it. And I was thinking that that may be eligible for Lodging Tax Committee application. And then, we do not have a 24-hour downtown restroom that's open, 24 hours, but we all know that this is a busy tourism season, and perhaps the 24/7 downtown restroom is something that we could submit an application to the Lodging Tax Committee for. So those are three items. I thought if we sought alternate forms of funding, it may move them along quicker. I'd just like to, council, to consider those.
Any comments or questions?
I agree with Councilmember Kidd, particularly in regard to the bathrooms. I know Susan's been mentioning this ever since I've been on council, and before then. You know, we have plans to put in place several more permanent bathrooms, and hopefully we'll be able to be open 24 hours. In the meantime, let's get something in there. I mean, when you go out to La Push, when you go out to Niobay, they've got bathrooms, it's easy. They use porta-potties, they're open all the time. They get trashed or vandalized, it's just a porta-potty. So yeah, we need to be taking care of these things, and I don't think it's acceptable for us to not.
I don't necessarily agree on the Dream Playground, I don't think that would really meet the criteria for what a lodging tax grant would be, but I tend to probably give it to you, but.
Well, and it would seem that they would need to stay in the amended budget for now until the lodging tax, until we were successful, and then we would amend it again. Is that accurate from a process standpoint?
That's correct. So right now, the expenditures would stay in there, and we would just change the revenues to reflect if you were to receive lodging tax.
Madam Mayor, council, by May, just to kind of talk a little bit about the projects Councilmember Kidd just talked about. So earlier this year, the Council set aside $165,000 for the railing replacement at the city pier. As we go through that project and we determine what the actual costs are going to be for that, there is a possibility, depending on turnover, that we go out for lodging tax and/or some rate funding to make up that difference if there is a gap. I can also tell you that the city and the Dream Playground Foundation is very interested in putting in money for the Dream Playground. It is something that is not only used by residents in our community, but by visitors right on our Ray Street corridor, and we are looking for a significant amount of funding this year in the capital portion of that. And the main purpose of that is for the different type of surfacing that we're going to need, which is around $150,000 for that playground. I also gave a presentation that, long ago, about the CFP project for the restrooms, and that's something we're still working through, and I could provide a update on that particular project later on this year.
Director Delacour, is there, is there a restroom downtown that could possibly be used as a 24-hour restroom? Or is there not anything that's capable of doing that, or at least through the summer during the tourist season?
That would just be a determination of us leaving when open. They're not designed for a 24-hour bathroom, if that's what you mean.
That was kind of my adjust of the question, but I, it is something that I agree we need to provide somewhere downtown. There's a lot of, I mean, the stores aren't open late, people have nowhere to go.
So council, I'm going to make you a suggestion, recognizing that, you know, the topic or the focus as presented by our finance director is really on the budget amendment, but I really appreciate the council insight to really think ahead and make sure we know what you might, as council, want to see staff applying for relative to lodging applications in the capital process. So my suggestion would be that we bring forward at your next meeting the recommendations that staff has as far as what those applications might look like for capital projects for the year 2020, so we can do that, and certainly the lodging tax. If those applications are successful, they can supplant some of the general fund monies that you see in the budget amendment you brought to you this evening. And if that works for council, we'll bring it back on August 20th. I don't require that, I think that staff can do that without council approval, that's my thing.
Yeah, I think that's excellent, to get that in the next meeting. Given it was just information, it'd be interesting to know. All right. So let's read the ordinance. An Ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, Amending the 2019 Budget and Funds. And this is going to be continued to the August 20th meeting. Unless there's any other comments?
I just have one, if you wouldn't mind. Serena, it looks like we're carrying about a 32% reserve, is that, what's the prognosis on that, if you wouldn't mind?
It is about a 32%, just under reserve, and that is something that we will be addressing when we go through the budget process.
And I got to admit, moving that fireman's pension there is, that's a little scary proposition that's to come, so I'm actually grateful we have that extra funds. Okay. Now, on to the professional services for the Olympic Peninsula Community Clinic.
And I'm a board member of the Olympic Community Clinic, and I participate in discussions on that end, and it's not a council appointment, it's just me as a private citizen, so I'll be recusing myself.
Okay, thank you. And so this would be Chief Smith.
Yeah, Mayor and council, the proposed agreement you have in front of you is identical to the agreement that we submitted to you last year for 2018, 2019, and you approved it to allow us to be ready to accept the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Chiefs of Police grant for the rediscovery program. We are scheduled to appear before their review panel on the 20th, and we'll, actually, by close of business on the 20th, know what we've been awarded, but having this agreement in place allows us to have, to be ready. And it's identical to what you approved last year, so unless there's any questions, it's pretty straightforward. And other news, I don't think we've told you, the rediscovery program's back online as of last Friday, thanks to the help of Olympic Peninsula Community Clinic and their ability to find some additional funding. So we had a pause, and now we're back, back operational with that program.
That is wonderful. Any comments or questions on this?
I'm just grateful that this is back before us now, and hopeful that our full grant request comes through. I really think the program is valuable, and I really appreciate the work that particularly Amy Miller does, but also the police department, and I really, I think it's just been a really good program for our community, so I'm grateful that this is back before us again tonight.
I concur, and I want to thank you, Chief, for the excellent work our police department has been doing, and in conjunction with this grant and the way it's cooperated with OPCC for Services. I think the community has noticed the effort your police department's putting in, and I look forward to receiving this grant again, and I... And I really applaud the work of the police department. This is great community service. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I move that we approve the professional services agreement between PAPD and OPCC for the 2019-2020 rediscovery program, and authorize the city manager, upon award of the WASPIC funding, to sign the professional services agreement with OPCC.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Just come and say the great partnership. So, thank you. All right. Is there no comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. If someone can get Councilmember French, that would be great.
We'd be happy.
Yes, we do. So, on to council reports. Councilmember Kidd.
It was compassionate service was brought up tonight. I think it's good to talk about it, and it's good to be aware of it, and it's good to share that amongst ourselves and the community. I don't believe it needs to be a formal document, but I think discussing it is very positive. This afternoon, I was running an errand, and I was coming up First Street and stopped at Lincoln and was going to take a ride. And there was a local gal that I've seen over the years walking across the street. She had a cup of coffee in one hand, and two bags of foods, things, in her right hand. And her pants were way, way too large. And I've seen her before, where she's usually holding up her britches with one hand, but she didn't have any hands to hold up. And when she got across the street, I was kind of taken aback that her pants had slipped significantly. And so, I realized she needed some pants to fit, because she...they were lower than anything I'd ever seen in public. So, I pulled over and said, "Hey girlfriend, your pants are too big." She said, "Yeah." And I said, "Would you accompany me to Goodwill? We need some that fit you." And we found a pair, and I gave her a ride to Milahoney Heights. And when she left the car, thanking me and walking away, she looked good. And she carried things in both hands, and her pants stayed up to a much more pleasant viewpoint. But, you know, let's talk about compassion. Let's live compassion. I don't think it has to be a formalized document. I think that's the kind of community we are, and it's just good to...it's good to be aware of each other. That's all my report.
The pool board meeting last month, at the end of the month. Think you can look across the street and see what's going on there. And then, went down toward Westport Yacht. And then, went down toward the Cable Innovator, I believe. Councilmember Moran also toured that one time. That's an impressive, an impressive piece of equipment for what they have to do on there. And it was interesting talking to those folks. They actually...so they're from London, or the officers are British. But due to the busy harbor across in Victoria, it's a little bit harder for them to bolt to get in and out and have slip space available. But they were so happy to actually be in Port Angeles, riding their bikes, kayaking, walking the waterfront trail. There was one officer there that runs the remote underwater vehicle that was actually hoping to be stationed there for another two years on that ship. Because they move around to other ships that tend to do a little more repair than this one does. Essentially, they go out into the ocean and repair fiber optics that get severed by anchors or fishing nets, or whatever else happens. And it was nice to hear, and they were asking a lot of questions about downtown especially. And I said, "Well, if you're here two years from now, you will notice some significant changes." So they were happy to see that. And just a great bunch, very relaxed, wasn't the strict, stiff atmosphere. And I had lunch with them, and that was a lot of fun. And that was it. I'm sorry I couldn't be here last night. I had other duties.
We have been going through a strategic planning process with a consultant at Clallam Transit, and that has been a really valuable and interesting process. And we had our final meeting with the consultant last week. And I feel like we've made a lot of progress. And I would encourage people who might be interested in transit to come to our meeting. We're going to be talking about updating the...following up on the work that we did at the last work session, on updating the mission, vision, and values of the organization. And it might be interesting to people, and it'd be nice to get some feedback from the public. We meet on the third Wednesday of this week, month. We've moved it because of the transit conference, so it'll be Wednesday, August 28, at 10 o'clock at the Clallam Transit offices out west.
So, I'll be attending the Washington State Transportation Association Conference. That is through my position on the Clallam Transit Board, along with the Deputy Mayor. And I agree with Deputy Mayor's sentiments on the strategic planning and where we could go on the Clallam Transit. One other thing to add there is that there's going to be some new buses on the road, probably within a year, which is kind of amazing. I guess they're all built to order, and usually there's a long line, but somehow they're near the front of the line. So that's fantastic. I also agree with Councilmember Meredith about downtown. I had the opportunity, along with Councilmember Kidd, to tour the Lincoln Theater through the Port Angeles Business Association. And it's really exciting to see that facility coming together, and hopefully soon being able to be a much more used space in the community. So I hope that the city can help to facilitate that as well as possible, given our role in it. I want to thank everyone who's a candidate for city council. I know, you know, when you file, it's like, well, maybe no one else will run for that position. But, you know, having contested elections gives us an opportunity, as a whole community, to think about what our city means and what vision we want for our city. So, thank you for running and contested races, and good luck tonight, in a few hours. And regardless of the outcome, thank you for being part of it and putting yourself forward in that public process. Susan, you're still here. You may have done this already, but if there's a map of priority locations for bathrooms and garbage cans, maybe prioritized as well, that would be a really useful resource. And that attempted vehicular assault, I please hope that you filed a report with the appropriate parties for that one as well. Let's see. I also attend the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priority Subcommittee that deals with housing, land use, and environment. Not sure how I got picked for that one, but it's the second year I've been on legislative priorities. I think it's a really valuable way for us to weigh in how Association of Washington Cities looks at what its priorities are going to be in the next state legislative session. So, we talked a lot about housing, of course. It was kind of like, oh, and what about these other topic areas? But basically, with the other ones, covert funding remains a high priority for the association and for all Washington cities. So we're looking at more on where affordable housing measures are at, and those sorts of things. So happy to give more updates if anyone is interested particularly. I apologize I missed my appointment at the Farmer's Market Council table with less than a week's notice to everyone. So if somebody was able to fill in for me, I owe you, and let's figure out how to make that up. But otherwise, I apologize to the market for not being able to make that. So, on a completely different note, mid-last month, the State Department of Ecology, despite its rhetorical statements about the importance of protecting the Salish Sea ecosystem, reissued four National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permits for Atlantic salmon deck pen facilities operated by Cook Aquaculture in mid-July. There's a facility here in Port Angeles, although it's not one of the ones with those NPD permits. So, we're here in Port Angeles, you know, we have a facility like that. We're also next to the L.A. River, which is recovering as the salmon spawning river. And thus, we're in a location where juvenile fish need healthy nearshore habitat after they leave the river. So, a lot of people were expecting the state to protect ecosystem health on this particular issue. But Department of Ecology's action reissuing permits should be a warning sign that we need to take local action to protect our home. I'd like to see this council consider what we can do, particularly given our geographic location in the Salish Sea, and all the work the city is putting into trying to recover a healthy harbor, in many other ways that we've been discussing. So that happened last month through the department. At our previous city council meeting, we had a presentation by John Warrensworth, who's a local arborist. And I want to make sure that we don't leave that by the wayside. We've been talking about trees on and off, but we haven't really kind of gotten into what we want to do. I was walking through the west side of town and walked down an alley I hadn't been down. I saw a number of trees that had recently been topped, and the leaves were still in the limbs lying below them. You know, and, you know, early on last year, we had a presentation by the State Department of Natural Resources Urban Tree Staff, and they said, "Do not top trees." Yet, here we are, you know, doing it, or private parties are doing it. So this issue's continuing. It only takes a day to permanently mess up an urban tree, whereas it takes years to grow a new one. So, given all the positive externalities we get from urban trees, and their really great cost-benefit ratio in so many ways, I think we need to prioritize this issue. It takes a long time to fix it when it gets messed up. In many ways, it's like issues around homelessness. I think I heard a recent statistic, being homeless takes about 30 years off your life expectancy, something like that. So, I mean, that's an issue we're dealing with on the peninsula as well. So the last thing I want to address is that question, and I think of hers, is DeBae, because I went to Port Angeles High School, and she was a teacher. But Susan DeBae talked a little bit about this in talking about the Charter of Compassion, which I do think we should formally adopt. And in a letter we received to the city, the council, the city manager, I think there was some of the similar sentiments. So, Ron Allen from the Jamestown Tribe sent a letter inviting us all to attend the Medication Assisted Treatment Project update that's coming up later this week, on Thursday over in Squim. And Ron Allen, or Chairman Allen, ended his article, or his letter, saying, "We have all seen the loss caused by opioid addiction. We have nothing to fear from treatment. All people have value, and all are capable of changing their lives with appropriate support." That statement, "All people have value," I think is really key. And we often lose sight of that. I mean, people have lost sight of that in events that happened over this last weekend. We lose sight of that in our community when there's assault or attempted assault, of people who, for whatever reason, somebody thinks doesn't belong here, because they're living in the street, because they don't, you know, fit in a certain way, because they're a person of color. We're seeing assaults like that. So, it's important for us to remember that. All people have value.
Okay, so I will say, I rather enjoyed the little break that we had with council, even though I really love doing this job. But this time of summer is a very busy time for me. That being said, I did attend a couple meetings, the Homelessness Task Force, earlier today, actually, where we had a really good discussion about the ballot proposal for the 1/10th and 1% sales tax for affordable housing. It was a good group to have that discussion, and Christie Smith from the United Way had some really good thoughts. So, we had a long discussion, actually, about housing vouchers from the representative of the Peninsula Housing Authority. There's just a lot of...it's a complicated system, that there's a lot of need and not a lot of support. And so, people that are qualified for rental assistance often just cannot find physical places to live. Even if they're doing everything right, even if we find ways to revolve other barriers that they might have, there still just aren't enough rentable units. And so, that's a challenge that we still have in this community. And that group will be working on updating their five-year plan to end homelessness over the next two months, and I'll think I'll be involved as a member. The...a couple weeks ago, we had the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting for the month, and that was held at the Herman Brothers Facility, which was really great. I got to see how close and personal the...a really great place. And Bill Herman gave us a little bit of history about that facility, his family's history, the business, the farm. He talked about, really interestingly, his work over the last decade cleaning the storm on runoff from that site. And he had some really creative solutions, and I was really impressed. You know, most of the things we talked about stayed in the room, but the quote of the meeting, I thought, was, Bill, we were talking about just the transportation issues we have around our city with truck traffic downtown, with the choke points, and the need, you know, potentially for other crosstown routes, bypasses, and things like that. And what Bill said was, when you have issues like this, he said, "You have to make it everyone's plan." And just that view of, you have to bring everyone in and get everyone on board, I really loved that thought. So, the chamber's doing a lot of good work. We've been preparing to hand off the concerts on the pier to Wanda Fuka Foundation, because that's kind of in their wheelhouse. So this year's been kind of a collaborative year on that. Hopefully next year, they'll be taking it over, I'm sure. Planning for the Winter Ice Villages is ongoing, with hopefully an extended season and a larger ice rink. The next focus of the board is membership, just getting our membership roles cleaned up and expanding, and to say, hey, the chamber is now really doing a lot of great work. The chamber has had like a little bit of a metamorphosis, and we're now serving the business community with, I think, a high level. So, join. We've had some staff changes. Our events manager got a job with the Jamestown Hotel project. We've already found a good, capable replacement. So, the chamber, I think, is in really good shape overall. Every meeting, we have really great conversations, we have a really active board. So if it's been a year and a half, then it's been one of my favorite appointments. So thank you. It's ongoing, and I love it.
Thank you. Jim?
A number of things. First of all, I have a unique hobby of being able to drive people out to the New Dungeons and Snakes Lighthouse. And it's a, for you hiking enthusiasts, it's a five-mile walk, one-way. But if you become a lighthouse keeper, you can stay out there for a week, and I get to drive you out there. So it's...and last Saturday, I drove out the new set of keepers, and I'm telling you, it was 7:00 transfer, and 7:00 in the morning, out of the New Dungeons and Snakes Lighthouse. If you don't think this is God's country, you ain't visited this place. So, anyway, that was really...I enjoyed doing that. A couple other things. First of all, at the end of the last month, we had, the North Olympic Development Council had their monthly meeting, and we had a presentation from the Department of Agriculture on farms in Clallam and Jefferson County. And they provided some demographics, who runs farms today, what kind of produce that the farms do, manufacture, if you will. But also, he talked about a term I'd never heard before, agriturism. Have you ever heard that before? Yeah? Okay. So I'm a city guy, so I don't know what agriturism is. So I knew, lavender fester is agriturism. So, there you go. Learned something today. And that was really interesting, in the statistics and how farming has changed in our two counties over the years, was an enlightening presentation. I also, as the mayor and I attended a meeting that was headed up by Randy Johnson, our county commissioner, trying to put together a task force to get a handle on the construction costs here in Clallam County. Randy's got a model that he's put together that if we could find out how to put it together and duplicate it, it would go a long way to helping the homeless and rental situation. Right now, the building costs, John, you probably know what they are about, $285 to $300 a square foot. And Randy's goal is to get the building costs down to about $125 to maybe $140 a square foot. If we can put that model together, it's a great opportunity for construction, and then if we can replicate it, we can go a long way for solving the homeless problem, or the low-income rental, or that specific area. And my last thing, on Thursday at noon, I am going to join the Airport Manager Day Gates in a mild saunter around the airport. And so if you wanted to take in the sights of Fairchild International, join us for a little walk around the airport at noon on Thursday. The weather's supposed to be beautiful, as it normally is around here, so I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I guess to fill in a little bit more on that housing meeting, those costs, the first cost of the 245 for construction, those are the public costs versus the private costs at around 125%. So, he was...he involved Pratt III as well, trying to figure out how we do that funding of the private-public partnership. So, hopefully something will come out of that. Yesterday, I received an email... Yesterday, I received an email from Utsu. They are going to celebrate their 60th year of, I can't remember what, the 60th year of what. Anyway, they would like us to go ahead and write a letter for them, you know, showing what our partnership and what we've done. So, anybody who would be interested in helping me with that, it is welcome to. So, I thought that would be really nice. I attended, I listened to the webinar today on housing. It did clarify a little bit on that 1406, because I wasn't sure when the county got funds or if we took the funds, but it turns out, all the sales tax funds that the city gains just stay in the city. The county gets all the ones that are incorporated county. So, if other cities wanted to do that, they would only get the funds from their own city. So, that was a, I wondered in that little formula, it said that the county would get zero and I thought, doesn't seem fair. So, but, so it's not that. So, that's the wrong number. As to the farmers market, I had apologized to Lindsay because I stood them up last time, so I took over this one. And it was a really, boy, it was busy, really, really busy. So, let me read you guys a lot of the things that happened. We have like 12 or 13 items here. So, one, someone from the bowling, someone who uses the bowling alley a lot made it, I guess, pointed out to me that whenever it rains here in Port Angeles, where do the tourists go? Well, they go to the bowling alley. One of the places that they go because it's a place to have fun, it's a family place and they can do that. Anyway, apparently that bowling alley has roof leaks and they're in need of a lot of help. He considered it a gem in our community and any which way to figure out how we get some help to that bowling alley, it would be worth it. The second person that came to talk to me talked about the closing of The Tempest. They just were appalled that, you know, how the sanitary conditions go from one day to the next, being okay and not being okay, and then the amount of money given for staff. The third one was about the homeless. One person talked about folks staying at Serenay House and need to do some community service. They were pretty adamant that they needed to have a little give and take on that. Then, I had another person said that we hope that we will sign the Charter for Compassion. Then I had another person talk about the 5G and the smart meters and they were in total support of it. So, they felt like that was something we needed to do. That also, in the road between Washington and Lordson to Fifth, the traffic goes too fast. They felt like we needed a speed bump at that point. I had somebody else come in and say, "We need to ban Roundup." Another person who said, "We need to ban Styrofoam." Then, another person who wanted to create a little Veterans Day parade here. And I know that most of the times, we end up going to the Coast Guard, but they wanted to do something here for the veterans, for Veterans Day and is looking for funds. Another person talked about the park at the Overlook that the views are getting, starting to get blocked and they felt like it needed some cleanup out there. And the tables and chairs. Everybody's impressed with the tables and chairs and I'd say, "Let's add some more if we can," because they are really a good thing. So far, I think we're doing pretty well. I think, like you said, maybe might have lost one, but in general, I think it's, hopefully...
I think we lost two chairs by the fountain.
Oh, really? Well, but I think in general, as an investment for the public, for our quality of life, I think it's a good one for the city. So, that was the farmers market. What else? Had a meeting with Dry Creek, dealing, you know, starting to look at the issues of how are we going to address some of the water shortage in the region? So, Mark Ozias was there as well. And so, just looking at the broad picture of water shortage. And that is, yeah, that's it. But we only have a rest. So, Kim, say your name.
Madam Mayor and Council, there's a number of items in your packet. There's two specifically that I want to highlight. Most notably is we have declared a stage two water shortage and we are encouraging all residents to conserve water at this point. There is, excuse me, there is a detailed memorandum in your packet that outlines the different stages of a water shortage and we've implemented stage two at this point and will be providing further updates to councils as we move forward.
I'm proud to say that my lawn is brown.
Yes.
Council, on another item, I wanted to provide an update from a schedule perspective. And you may recall at your last meeting, we presented to you the annual city council meetings scheduled with some items. One of the items that I know council very much looked forward to was an August 27th work session on vacant properties. And at this point, there have been two items that have been added to the plate of the legal department. And for that reason, we're going to suggest that we push off the vacant properties. But we're actually doing it more for the reason of how important this other item is that we need to discuss. And essentially, we need to follow through and make sure we've completed the cost of service assessment for the electric utility. That is one of the few remaining elements that we haven't done yet for the COSA. And we think in order to time it right with budget, this item is pretty much critical that we have an opportunity to discuss it as council. We all know how critically important that issue is to all of our residents and council members and we want to get the electric utility COSA right. And so, for that reason, my recommendation is that we actually modify the August 27th meeting and make it a electric COSA work session and we'll be rescheduling the vacant properties one. Back to the workload, again, the legal department was the lead on the vacant property issues. They have also taken on House Bill 1406, the ballot measure, as well as the for-hire vehicle ordinance that's before you tonight. And I think in fairness to that department, we need to postpone that, give them more time to develop that.
Do you foresee that in the next month or two?
I do. I would anticipate we could probably get that back on the schedule within the next two months.
Agent, a quick question. The August 27th meeting, I thought, was a budget meeting?
No, we did double check that and we do not have the August 27th meeting as a budget meeting in the budget calendar.
Thank you.
Okay. And so, we are now to the second public comment period for the night. Anybody who would like to stand, state your name and address it in the city?
John Ralston, City of Port Angeles resident. I certainly support the taxing situation for the homeless needs, but I'm also a huge advocate for having some sunsets in it. I think at some other time, I can give you my explanations, but I just want to make that on the record for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience who would like to address the city council at this time? All right, well, seeing that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Do you want candidates?
Thank you.